Okay, good evening, everyone. I am calling to order the zoning board of appeals meeting of Thursday, July 18th, 7 o'clock at the Lakeville Public Library. We'll jump right into the agenda. First item on the agenda is the Benati hearing. We have received an email from Mr. Benati asking to withdraw his ZVA appeal as of June -- it's June 2nd, 2023, but it's irrelevant when he asks because tonight is when we're voting on it. So he's asking to withdraw his appeal without prejudice for the complaint that he put in against the building commissioner. So I will entertain a motion to withdraw without prejudice if anyone is still inclined.
I'll make a motion. Set motion.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Great. Okay, the next agenda item is the Frazier hearing. Do you have someone here?
Yes.
All right. Come on up. As they're coming up, I'm going to read the public announcement into the record. Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 48 is amended, will conduct the public hearing on Thursday, July 18th, 7:00 p.m. at the Lakeville Public Library, 4th Precinct Street, upon petition of James Frazier. Special permit is requested under Section 270-6.1C. Place a 20-by-30 bulk garage on existing foundation on a pre-existing non-conforming lot as provided by the Lakeville Bylaws. The property site is two, Summit Street. Application and sort of documents were available at the planning board. Okay, let me -- actually, you know what? Why don't you state your name, address for the record, and then tell us what you're looking to do. Do me a favor, that mic right in front of you, there's a little switch on it, click it open, and then speak into that. That way, every one of the audience can hear you. I know you're talking to us, but--
I don't like karaoke.
There's no music here, so you're all set.
James Frazier, 3 Summit Street, Lakeville, right across the street from it.
Okay.
I need more storage.
That's it.
And eventually, I want to buy the house to butt it.
Okay.
Basically, I need more storage.
So, uh, let's see here. We have a couple of memos to read into the record, one from the Board of Health, dated July 8th, 2 Summit Street. Eric, Zoning Board, Board of Health has received a petition for hearing for 2 Summit Street. As long as the proposed garage is not having water or sewer connections and not be used as a dwelling, then the Board of Health has no objections to the proposed garage.
Nope.
Conservation, we received an email from them stating that they do not have any comments on this petition. So, it sounds pretty plain and simple here. You're looking to put a garage up?
Yeah.
On a non-conforming lot?
On an existing foundation. The foundation's there already.
The foundation is already there?
Yeah, it's been there.
Okay.
It's existing, correct.
All right, so it's just the non-conformity of the lot. I'd like to add a lot of comments here. I shouldn't say "like" to, but there really isn't any need. Seems pretty plain and simple. It's not going to be habitable, it's not going to have electric, it's not--
It's going to have electricity.
It's not going to have water or--
No water, no sewer.
Okay. Any questions from other board members?
No, pretty straightforward.
Anyone? Okay. Again, unfortunately for you, you have to come before us because of the size of the lot, so it is what it is, right?
It's one of the bigger lots down there.
Still not big enough to go right to the--
It's 11,000 square feet.
That's big for down there.
And I have 15,000 across the street, but I don't want to combine them because I'm still trying to buy the house next to it.
Okay.
Combine everything.
Any comments from the public or anyone else in attendance this evening? Okay. Do you have any additional comments from the board or questions?
What was on the foundation before?
A house. It's been gone 40 years, 50 years.
Any other questions? Anyone willing to make a motion or inclined to make a motion to propose the petition as applied for?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the petition as applied for.
Any conditions?
No conditions.
Second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
You're good. Kathy, what's next one?
So we have two weeks to do the form, and it's submitted to the county court. There's a 20-day appeal period. After that, there's some things I'll contact you to pick up.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Do you want me to speak louder for a second?
Just a second.
Okay, next agenda item is the continuance of the residents at LeBaron Hills hearing. So before we continue with this, I do want to make a comment and then ask for counsel to comment in addition to that. I know there's been some confusion, I believe, within the community in regards to Mr. Itani and his, A, being in compliance with the state in regards to if there are any complaints or anything against him on this or other projects, and also in regards to the number of three bedrooms that need to be in place and the timing on that, and I guess in addition also if he's in compliance. So rather than me take the risk of making any mistakes, I'm going to ask counsel to comment on both of those items, if she would not mind.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'm just pulling up the proper document, and I apologize, I wasn't able to connect my laptop today. But with regard to the three bedrooms, and after this document was sent to me, I do recall that it was provided during Phase 5, which is that because we are dealing with a 2004 project eligibility letter, so a PEL is dated 2004, so this is a 20-year project, which is not common, but so in any event, we're under a 2004 project eligibility letter. The 10% requirement does not apply to this project because the 10% requirement only applies to projects from 2014 on. So essentially, this is, it's a kind of grandfathered out of that provision, and that's in the inter-agency agreement regarding housing opportunities for family and children. And that document specifically states that a project under Chapter 40B comprehensive permit rules for which a Chapter 40B project eligibility letter is issued on or after March 14th, 2014. So that is the effective date. So it is my opinion that this project is not subject to the 10%.
To clarify that, when you refer to the inter-agency agreement, that's not even a specific agreement between the developer for this project--
No.
--and the state. That's state mandated--
Correct. That is between a bunch of initials. So are you ready? It's between DHCD, which is the Department of Housing and Community Development. That is now the Executive Office of Housing in the local communities. They changed their name. It's also between MHP, the Massachusetts Housing Partnership. It's also between Mass. Housing, Mass. Development, and the Community Economic Development Assistance Corporation, which is CDEC.
Great. Okay, thank you for that clarification. And also in regards to Mr. Itani being in good standing?
Sure. So we received a, we received an email from a, from a citizen that was questioning, that said that this town should be questioning the state as to why Itani is still able to build despite all the lawsuits and complaints. So based on that email, I reached out to the state, and I reached out to Jessica Malcolm at Mass. Housing. And this morning, I received an email from her where she states that Mr. Itani is currently in good standing with Mass. Housing. I also reviewed the online dockets from Mass. Courts and did not see any active lawsuits regarding his 40B developments. So there are, there are situations such as the Housing Appeals Committee, their dockets are not online. I don't know if there's any lawsuits there, but we would need more information in any event. But Mass. Housing has confirmed in writing that he is in good standing with that.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. We just want to make sure that we respond to any inquiries in regards to anything along those lines, and obviously, we have. So hopefully, that gets rid of any of the confusion, and if anyone has anything specific, unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on, I guess, which side of the fence you're on, unless you have something concrete, innuendo and hearsay, it really doesn't, isn't something we can act on, so. Okay, now on to the actual hearing itself. So what I want to do before I turn it over to counsel is, tonight, what we'd like to do is focus on the traffic study that was done. Similar to what we've done in past hearings, we'd like to have that discussion in regards to, from the petitioner, what their traffic study showed, have the board ask questions, invite the audience, residents, to ask questions, and then what we can do is pass that information on to our peer reviewer who already has a copy of it and is in the process of reviewing it. We'll get that information back, and at our next meeting, we can get the answers to our questions and get their opinion on the traffic study. So at this point, counsel, I would ask you to present, and if you don't mind, the mic in front of you, make sure it's on.
It's on.
It's on. We'll make sure it's close enough so that everyone can hear it.
Okay. Mr. Chairman and board members, for your record, my name is Robert Mather. I represent the applicant. Only two people with me tonight, Rami Itani, representing the developer, and Patrick Bradley from Chapel Engineering Associates. Patrick is our engineer that did the traffic study. And one quick clarification, we know that one of the proposals that we're asking for is an increase in the number of units, 36 units, and we know that has not been approved at this point. But I will point out that our traffic study includes the maximum increase. So if it, if it's not approved, the traffic study covers it because it could be, could be less. So at this point, I will turn it over to Patrick.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you for having us today.
Patrick, if it's easier to hold in your hand, you can do that.
Thank you, everybody, for having us today. Again, for the record, my name is Patrick Bradley, Chapel Engineering. I was one of the traffic engineers on this traffic report, and I'm happy to go through our findings for this expansion to LeBaron Hills. So first slide here shows the site, the study area that we had studied. It includes Bedford Street up to Rhode Island Road, as well as Precinct Street, and over from Rhode Island Road to Precinct Street, as well as the two main driveways to the existing site and the one driveway on Precinct Street. So as proposed, the site was originally approved for 386 units in 2004. At the time of the study, 248 units were constructed and occupied. The proposed expansion is asking for additional 36 units for a total of 422 residential units. 35 would be townhouse units under Phase 5, and the additional other unit would be included with Phase 6 of the construction.
Can you put the mic closer? We can't hear you.
Sorry, yeah. So I'll just go-- Oh, there we go. Sounds good. I'll just go back through that again. So as said before, the site was originally approved for 386 units in 2004. 248 of those units have been constructed and occupied at the time of the report, which was in late 2022. The proposed expansion is looking for an additional 36 units, 35 of which would be townhouse homes under Phase 5 construction, and an additional unit would be added to Phase 6 of construction. The site access would remain at the existing driveways on Rhode Island Road, as well as one on Precinct Street. As a part of, as separate from this project, there are some roadway improvements that are being planned by Mass. DOT, one of which is improvements to the intersection of Rhode Island Road and Bedford Street to add some more turn lanes, as well as reconstructing the Rhode Island Road and Precinct Street intersection to make it a more perpendicular T-intersection to reduce conflicts there. This is the site plan for the site. As you can see, Phase 5 is the bottom red highlighted area, which would house the 35 townhouse units, and then Phase 6, which is already planned, which would have an additional unit added to that, is on the top right-hand side. And this just kind of highlights the study area again. I apologize for the, it's a little hard to read there with the red text, but basically, we had studied the two signalized intersections on Bedford Street, at Rhode Island Road, and Precinct Street, the three driveways that would access the site, as well as the Precinct Street at Rhode Island Road intersection. We also had automatic traffic reporting counts on both Rhode Island Road and Precinct Street to get daily volumes for those, as well as speed data. So the methodology behind the report, obviously, we get traffic volumes from the counts at those intersections I had mentioned, as well as those ATR counts on those two roadways. We analyze the different intersections for their geometry and safety. We look at the crash history at those intersections, the vehicle speeds along those roadways, and the site distances at the available driveways to the site. When we forecast the traffic for this area, we had used a 1% growth rate for traffic in the area. We accounted for any developments that were approved or being built at the time, and we also accounted for not only any units that were not occupied at the time that were built within the site, but also units that were not yet constructed. And all of our trip generation data was based off of ITE. This slide here shows the expansion to the site. So you can see Phase 5 has the 35 additional units using land use code 215, which is for single-family attached housing, as well as the additional units for the multifamily mid-rise housing as a part of Phase 6. As you can see on the totals, the overall increase in traffic from what is already approved for the site is very minimal. So in conclusion, the project is expected to generate about a trip every five and a half, seven minutes during peak hours, thus the AM and PM peak hours, which we had studied, which is 7 to 9 a.m. and 4 to 6 p.m. We expect additional car every five to seven minutes during the AM on Rhode Island Road and six to 10 minutes, or one trip every six to 10 minutes on Bedford Street north of Rhode Island Road. As a part of this, we also did journey to work, trip distribution, which is how we determined where these trips would go on-site, and we determined that most traffic would be going north on Bedford Street because of the proximity of I-195, 140, and routes like that. There were negligible increases in delay expected at all city intersections as compared to the no-build condition, which includes the growth in traffic in the area, as well as the anticipated traffic generated from the housing that has not yet been built and not yet occupied on-site. We also determined that all the site lines at the existing site driveways are adequate for safe operation. So I open it now to any questions on traffic.
Mr. Chairman, I have just a quick logistical question.
Go ahead.
Attorney Mather's cover letter on the project change on May 22nd, 2024 states that the increase in the total number of units would be from 386 to 419. The first slide and the traffic engineer said that it was going to go to 422 units.
That's correct. If you remember at the last meeting, I did mention that that was an error and that we'd be looking for 422.
And then my other question is, would be math. So you are, you have three buildings, 36 units, that's 108 units, correct?
Correct.
And that's all you're looking for? I'm confused. If you bring up, could you bring up the first slide again?
When you say "all we're looking for," do you mean for maximum build-out?
So here it says, it says 35 townhouse units and then one additional unit. So Phase 6, you're considering Phase 6 just one additional unit?
Well, I think you're just, excuse me, just considering the total number of units in there. No, it's not one unit, obviously. It's proposed as three buildings. But you figured out the total number of units in the buildings. You shouldn't really have called it one unit, but--
It's 108 units.
The numbers are correct.
Yeah.
That's correct.
So why is it called one unit?
You're 36 on top of the, I agree with counsel, 386 to 422 is 36 by my math, right? But you have two other buildings with 36 each, that's another 72. So help me understand the math as well.
So as far as I know, those units were included in the initial 2004 approval, and that that is being added to it. There is, 36 total units would be added in this process.
I appreciate that answer, but you're concerned about traffic. We're concerned about the actual number of units going in, which is the applicant's answer.
So if I may, Rami Itani from the residences at LeBaron Hills. So it looks like there's somewhat of a typo. When that study was done, Phase 5B was not yet approved, I believe, or was in the process to get approved. And then there is 5.6. Phase 5B contains 35 units, which the board voted to approve a year or so ago. So we go from what was existing, which is Phase 1, Phase 2, Phase 3, Phase 4, Phase 5, and then we added Phase 5B, which is 35 units. And then in addition to those 35 units, we decided to go with Phase 6, which would contain up to 108 units, which is 72 units. That brings us up to the 386 that was originally approved in 2004, plus the additional, I believe, 36 units, that brings it up to 422. Did I confuse you even more?
Why does it say one additional unit?
So it could be just a typo, but it's not. So Phase 5B is 35 units, and that was already approved. So we are not, you know, we're not going back to discuss that, I guess. But Phase 6--
Is one unit. So what does the--
It's really, it's not. So I think it's just a typo. So it's not, I think, you know, it's just a typo. We're looking at 5.6, which will be 108 units. That's what we're looking to have approved.
Did you take your account of traffic? We had accounted for the apartments that were not built, and we're currently, we did account for those in the no-build condition.
As of today, we have 72 units that are approved within the 386 units, your total units within LeBaron Hills. Our application was for 108 units, which is 72 plus the additional units that we're looking to get approved.
So your question, clarification, is we need to, we need to know if it's one unit that this study worked on, or if this study actually is encompassing the total number of up to--
108.
108 additions.
Right. I'll put that back to Patrick, but Patrick, we need to confirm that your study was for a total of 422 units.
Yes. So the study did account for those. As I was saying before, I had said that we accounted for not only the units that were not occupied, but that were going to be constructed, which does include those Phase 6 units. This is just saying that one more unit to that was being added.
What unit? What do you mean?
35 of the units were townhouse homes, which is Phase 5B, as was being said, and there is an additional--
Patrick, are you referring to one unit being one additional phase?
Yes, to that phase.
Okay.
I did account for those Phase 6. The other units in there are accounted for in the no-build condition because the study was looking at what was being added to that total of it.
Okay. We just need to be assured that the numbers that the traffic study we're looking at is taking into consideration that whether you're referring to it as one unit, which honestly doesn't make sense, but that one unit is representing the 108 additional units. Am I asking the question correctly on my left ear?
I didn't should say "one phase," additional phase, but the word "unit" doesn't agree with the license at all.
I would certainly state that when this gets reviewed by--
Well, my next comment is going to be--
If it doesn't include--
We need to make, you need to make sure, because when our peer review engineer looks at it, if it doesn't incorporate that, my guess is it's going to be a very short--
Then it would have to be redone.
It's going to be very short.
There's no question about it. It would have to be redone if it doesn't include it.
So we need, we need to, we need to make sure that you're representing the exact amount of, up to the exact amount of additional units. And if you're telling us it does represent that, then we'll make note of that, and it'll be confirmed when the peer review engineer looks at it, the traffic on our end.
Yes, all of those units are included within the no-build condition. Their, the networks that show the extra traffic being generated are within the appendix. We cite them in the report as well.
Okay.
Just a little wording issue on this. I can see the confusion with how I worded it in here, but we did include those units within the no-build condition of this report, which we studied, we put the traffic on all these intersections, included that in the delays and stuff like that.
Okay. Again, it'll be confirmed when our peer review engineer looks at it, so. Amy, did you have any?
That was it. I was very confused. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I don't think you were the only one who was confused, so. Other questions from the board? Anyone at this point? Again, as you know, our peer review engineer is going to look at it. I'm more interested, honestly, to find out what the audience, audiences' concerns are at this point. So no one from the board has a question at this juncture. What I'll do is I'll open it up to anyone in the audience, unless there's any additional comments at this point from the petitioner, no. Okay, if anyone has a question, so let's see, how are we going to do this?
Mr. Chairman, I did have one, I'm sorry, I want to--
Go ahead. You ask a question, and I'm thinking about how we're going to--
Yeah, so the last, the last sub-bullet here says that the intersection of Rhode Island Road and Precinct Street will also be modified to make Precinct Street perpendicular to Rhode Island Road, thereby reducing the amount of, the number of conflict points. So does that impact the gated, the conditions regarding the gate from 2008 decision, where you were supposed, that where that access was supposed to be limited?
I don't think that's the intersection--
It's not.
--we're talking about.
Okay.
If you go down Precinct Street, Precinct merges with Route 79 in a V.
And you're going to make it perpendicular?
Well, no, we're not going. The state is making that perpendicular.
Okay. Thank you.
Name and address for the record, and then ask away.
Sure.
Dan Wilga, 8 Dunlop Pond Road, member of the planning board, through you, Mr. Chair. With regard to the traffic study, when were the dates of this traffic study taking place for all the areas listed there, so Rhode Island Road, Precinct Street, et cetera? And in addition to that, how long was that traffic study done?
Thank you for your question. So the counts were done in 2022. More specifically, they were done in September. So the--
Pre-just.
The original counts for this study were done in September of 2022. So for the turning movement counts, which were done at each of these study intersections, they were done over the peak hours in the AM, which is 7 to 9 a.m., and the PM, which is 4 to 6 p.m., during a normal weekday, as well as ATR counts, which were out for 48 hours to collect daily traffic and speeds on Rhode Island Road and Precinct Street.
Looks like typically September 28th, 2022, and 29th, 2022, Wednesday and Thursday. What I say here.
Thank you. Does anyone else have a question from the audience? Come on up. Does anyone else have a question from the audience? Come on up.
Hi, Christina Desso, One Abbey Street, which is off of Precinct Street. So you had mentioned that you had done a study on Fern Avenue, Precinct Street, but I didn't see anything indicating how much traffic it would be additional on Precinct Street. You did Rhode Island Road. If you flip to the next slide, I think. Right here, you said six and a half, six to ten and a half minutes off Bedford Street, and then Rhode Island Road. So what is it on Precinct Street as well?
Thank you. I put that in there because that is where most of the traffic is going. So I was trying to highlight the biggest impact to the study area, more specifically on Precinct Street itself. In terms of the no build condition, which does not include the additional units that we were looking for here, it looks like it was about seventeen additional trips in the AM. That's inbound and outbound from that driveway, and about twenty-two to the PM. That's inbound and outbound. That's over one hour in that time period.
Sorry, follow-up. So, and I don't know, I'm not a traffic person, so I have no idea. But if we're having a hundred and eight units coming out on Precinct Street, because that's what your plan shows, those three units are going to be coming out onto Precinct Street, like only seventeen cars, it, it just doesn't seem, that doesn't seem accurate. I'm, I'm just lost with the hundred and eight units and.
Patrick, do me a favor. Maybe the best strategy here is to explain how you come up with that seventeen number based on a hundred and eight units. I think a lot of people are visualizing a hundred and eight units. Everyone's leaving in the morning. How can only seventeen of them be there between?
Right. So all traffic generation that we do for traffic studies is based off Institute of Traffication Engineers. So they have a whole framework based off of physical studies they do for different developments of different types, based off of units or square footage, depending on what kind of development it is. So for this project specifically, we had used land use code two fifteen, which is for single-family attached housing for the Phase Five, as well as land use code two twenty-one, which is for mid-rise housing, which would represent the Phase Six of the development. Basically, you just input the units in that, and it kind of gives you these peak hour generation. And mind you, not everyone, say, in the morning going to work is leaving at the same hour. Some people are leaving earlier, some people are leaving later, some people even maybe working from home, which this does not count for. So this is based off of physical studies done by the ITE, and we apply that to here. And then when it comes to distribution of site traffic, we use a journey-to-work data, which is provided by the federal government, which basically they did studies about people living in certain communities and where they have their work. So we apply that to the roadway network. We see, well, if they're going to Boston, or they're going, you know, to Radham or wherever, we use that data to determine where they would be traveling from the site. And that's how we come up with who's coming out of what driveway at the different peaks.
Okay. Thank you.
Patrick, let me, for clarification, I don't know if you can answer this. I mean, what is the, how accurate are those figures? Because obviously, I mean, we've had other, you know, petitioners in front of us, and I've never asked a question before, but.
For the ITE numbers?
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're, you know, predicting what's, what's, what's going to happen. I mean, is it a ninety-nine percent accuracy? Is it eighty percent accuracy? Is it?
So it definitely depends on the type of development. Housing is definitely more accurate, I would say, just because they have more data points for it. And, you know, they plot based off the number of trips that they, they see in the field versus like number of units or the square footage, what have you. And it's plotted out on a graph. So for housing developments, it's more or less linear. It can't be completely linear because that's, you know, it's not how people work in general. But it's, for housing, it's pretty accurate when it comes to vector determination, at least as far as we can say mathematically.
Thanks. Do we have anyone else in the audience? Come on up, ma'am. I like the new setup, but we got to figure out a better way to have people coming up.
Karen Quinn, Three Old Spahn Drive. In regards to what you were just saying about traffic patterns and formulas, I'm wondering if you're taking into account some human nature, because personally, I don't drive down Seventy-Nine but on the road whenever I can. It's a mess. I think you might have a lot of people who are choosing now to leave through Precinct Street. It's easier. There's no potables that try to kill your car. There's no traffic. You're going to have people, especially trying to turn left. Turning left onto Rhode Island Road is not fun at that intersection on the main way to get out of LeBaron. So I don't know if that number in a formula is going to say, okay, we're going to have ten cars coming out. You might have a lot more than ten cars if people are looking to try to bypass traffic, the state of the road, also school buses. I'm guessing there's going to be school buses through there. Are school buses now going to be coming onto Precinct Street down that way? I think it's going to impact traffic more than we think once you take into human nature of how people are going to want to get out of that area. So that's all. Thanks.
Patrick, if you wouldn't mind commenting?
Thank you for your question. So when we do look at that journey-to-work, there is a bit of engineering judgment in that. So it's not as simple as, oh, they will take four ninety-five to go north, and that's where all the trips go. I look at a distribution of, you know, how long it takes or distance, and I apply different percentages to those different distributions. So it's not just throwing all the traffic north because of that, but it's trying to piece together kind of a framework of what could be a route for people. And that determines the percentages that we use for that distribution.
I just had one thought that I'd like to ask Patrick. The, suppose the counts are not correct, and assume twice as muddy cars and leave that. Would that cause a traffic problem? Could it handle twice that number of cars?
So in terms of the, the site intersections, for sure. It's level of service A, which, when you're looking at how intersections operate, we use a modeling tool that takes into account the volumes, peak hours, a lot of different kind of mathematical terms. And in our analysis, we found that the site driveways are operating level of service A, which is the best. There is minimal delays at those intersections. So even an increase, which it's not a huge number at these intersections in these peak hours, because, I, I guess, again, not everyone's leaving all at once. People have different schedules. They have different jobs that require different hours where they're working or when they're working. So even doubling it, I don't think it would be a massive increase in delays or anything like that. Sure, there will be some increase because, I mean, double is a lot to add, but I would not foresee it making a huge difference on the operation of those intersections.
Okay. Anyone else?
Hi, Susan Spielor, Ten Valley Road. So they mentioned that Route Seventy-Nine in Bedford Street, they would be adding more turn lanes. Did I read that correctly?
I believe that's a Mass DEP.
Yes, as, as what I can, as what I saw from Mass Highway plans. We received documents for that, like signal plans, stuff like that, which we also incorporated what the new signals would be, the timings, the different lane, lanes, and stuff like that. So we did incorporate.
That's nothing they're doing. They incorporate it into the, the study, is what I'm hearing. But that, that extra lanes, it's not.
But does it have any impact on the Seventy-Nine project that they're going to be working on?
That is a part of the project.
That is part of it. Because, I mean, it's narrowed to begin with. I don't know where they're going to get that land from. If they take eight feet away, I mean, they'll be in Madeline's building.
You're talking about the extra lanes?
Yeah.
Yeah. You'd have to ask Mass Highway, Heather. I, I agree. It's, it's tight, but I'm not sure. I think this says outside of this hearing. It has to do with Mass Highway. I'm guessing Mass Highway probably owns the land anyways that people have their front lawn on. Would be my guess.
Now, is this just on traffic study, or are we getting to other stuff?
Just traffic at this point.
Tonight?
Tonight.
Thank you.
It's also my understanding, because I live on Route Seventy-Nine, that the project is now scheduled for next spring for the, for the widening, which is going to take several of my trees.
That's our Mass Highway update for this evening. So Barbara?
Barbara Mankowski, Seventeen Johnson Drive. I've been involved with the community since before this project was approved. And it was my recollection that this development is primarily supposed to be for senior housing, and that the Fern Street access was not to be utilized. Is that the recollection? Is that the fact? Is, or tonight, are they talking about, because I hear us referencing Precinct Street, but my understanding was that hasn't been approved yet.
So I'm going to let Town Council comment on that after I make a couple of quick comments. It was not, it was never intended to be the primary access point. Access to the residents was always supposed to be an option down the road. There was a, there's, there's provisions within the paperwork that, obviously, for emergency access, the fire department always needs to be able to get it. But there is a provision that it's supposed to be gated, but not that it was supposed to be restricted. So I don't know if you want to piggyback on my comments to confirm that?
Sure. Just to confirm that, it says that, this is in two thousand and eight. I think it was maybe the first amendment to the permit. And it says that the project plans show a primary means of access from Rhode Island Road. An additional limited access roadway driveway will access to Precinct Street. This latter access will be gated and will be available only for project residents via a card reader and emergency personnel via means approved by the fire department.
Okay. Thank you. My second question is, there was a reference on the presentation to how many houses were approved, constructed, and occupied. Does that number include houses that were permitted but not yet built?
So is your question, does this traffic study encompass the total build-out, whether they're occupied, not occupied, built, not built? And I believe they are, but I would ask confirm that.
Yes, this goes back to the confusion from that third or fourth slide. But yes, we did account for what was built and not occupied. Also, we accounted for what was going to be built as a part of that initial approval into the no build and build conditions for the study.
In two thousand and twenty-two, when this study was completed, there was a lot of uncertainty still about the MBTA enhancements, which will be connecting Fall River and New Bedford. I'd like to know if those enhancements to train traffic would be part of the consideration on the traffic count.
For the study, we did not account for the MBTA. Any additions or any improvements to that, as we are not within, I believe, the determination is within a half mile. There is, ITE does account for if you have housing that is within, I believe, it is a half mile of transit, and that doesn't impact the trip generation based off of that. We did not account for that, so it would include more car traffic. So it'd be more of a conservative approach to how much traffic is being generated by the site.
I guess my question, Mr. Chair, is the MBTA traffic was not understood in two thousand and twenty-two because a lot of those projects had not been approved. They are now testing those trains. So the traffic on Route Seventy-Nine has and will continue to increase. I live off of Route Seventy-Nine, so I'm familiar with that. My question is, does this project consider the increased traffic as a result? Not, we're not a forty yard. We're not within a half mile. So I just am curious as to whether or not the traffic study counts account for that MBTA change.
So we did not account for any increased traffic that may be associated with the train station. But within the study itself, we did apply a one percent growth rate per year for our study. So that's seven-year growth, so seven-point-two percent like increase in traffic volumes is what we did account for.
Mr. Chair, my comment would be that we should probably have the figures updated because since two thousand and twenty-two to where we are today, there has been substantial change onto Route Seventy-Nine, as experienced on Maestri at Johnson Drive.
Which is why I wrote down in my notes that we'll be asking our peer engineer to view what we can do to make sure we are prepared.
Chairman, may I comment on that?
Sure.
My question's related as far as the time period. How did the traffic study industry in general apply COVID-related traffic pattern adjustments, especially for two thousand and twenty, twenty-one, and probably even twenty-two? Is a lot of people I know that come in on the train just anecdotally still aren't even up to working every day at this point?
So we do account for, we did account for COVID in the years following because we knew that obviously there'd be less traffic on the roadways. As of for this study, Mass DOT, traffic and safety, engineering, twenty-five percent design guidelines, updated in May of two thousand and twenty-two, and stated that their new directive, that any studies or accounts done after March first of two thousand and twenty-two would no longer be needed, needed to be adjusted for COVID. Before, we did adjust based off of historical data. So we would look at continuous count stations, which are on major highways like four ninety-five, and we would adjust based off those volumes to see if there was additional growth that would be needed. But per Mass DOT's guidelines, we did not have to account for that for this study.
Follow-up. Are you good?
I'm good. Thank you.
Anyone else from the audience have a comment or a question? Come on up, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Kelly Newman. I live in LeBaron. And one of the houses, one of the last single-family homes before, that's on Fern Avenue, before you get to Precinct. I just want to understand this process, how this all will work regarding everything. I, pardon, do you work for the builder, or do you work for Lakeville? I don't know.
He, he, so what happens is the petitioner has a commission to traffic study. So the petitioner hired his firm to do this. He presents it. We take the information, and we ask questions. But then we have our own traffic study done, which is what the process we're doing tonight is having them present. We're asking questions. We're getting input from the community. What we'll do is we'll take his study, which actually already has been taken, shipped off to our peer review. We'll send them a bunch of follow-up questions. We'll actually literally send them a link to the tape so they can watch the meeting to make sure I don't miss anything in my notes. And then they'll come back at a, most likely, hopefully, the next meeting, and they'll present their findings in addition to comment on the validity of their study, point out or answer any questions or concerns we have.
Thank you for clarifying the process. And I would please request that, that what the attorney was saying, that the paperwork is properly amended to reflect Phase Six and spell out. Because one unit sounds very different than spelling out how many, how many occupants. Thank you.
I can assure you all the paperwork will be correct as long as Amy looks at it first. Any additional questions or comments from the audience? Come on up, ma'am.
Hi, Talia Mendez from The Cottages. And I apologize, I was a little late, so I don't know if I missed something, but.
Don't worry about it. Absolutely.
I came because I saw your response on your comments to the developer. I was trying to understand or make sure that my interpretation was correct. And I thought that's what we were going to discuss tonight, not necessarily just the traffic studies. Can you please?
The traffic is the only thing we're discussing tonight. There will be subsequent hearings, but we're trying to do this in a kind of an organized manner.
So the letter that was attached for the agenda for tonight is not going to be discussed. The proposed letter from July fifteen, two thousand and twenty-four, in response to the last meeting, with the suggestion to the developer to close the current project term to Phase Five and complete the financial analysis to make sure the profits are limited to ten percent threshold in Phase Six.
So that, what that is, and I haven't even read it into the record yet, that's, that's basically a letter from another board making comments. So when we're done doing the traffic study. So when we're done doing the traffic study, it's behind what we have right here, I was going to read that into the record.
It says your name and says so many Board of Appeals.
Yeah, it's a memo to me as the chair, that the selectmen, excuse me, the select board want to make a comment for the record to help tell us their opinion on something.
Okay. So that's not, that's not necessarily the final.
No, we're going to read it into the record and we'll probably talk about it at a, at a later meeting.
Okay. Thank you. By the way, that was very good.
I'd like to take credit. All I did was have the name that's on the two, so. And thank the select, select board. Any other questions? Any other comments from board members after hearing questions from the audience? Amy, anything you have?
I do not. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So I think, as I've already explained, what we'll do at this point, unless the petitioner or the traffic study gentleman has any other additional points to add. Okay. So at this point, what we will do is, as I had mentioned, this study has already been given to our peer review engineer for traffic. We will send them a link or a copy, however we do it, of this meeting. And I will also send some questions and concerns that were raised tonight to make sure they get addressed. And like I said, hopefully, our expectation is that our peer review will have it done for our next meeting in August, and we will pick it up at that point again. So as I had just promised, the only other item in regards to this that I do want to read into the record, again, we're not going to necessarily be discussing it tonight, is we did receive, excuse me, a letter from the select board dated July 15th regarding the modification of comprehensive permit for LaBarre Residential LLC. At their meeting on June 24th, the select board reviewed the request for the modification to the comprehensive permit for LaBarre Hills LLC. In regards to the application, the board had the following comments, that the developer close out the current project permit through phase five and complete the financial analysis and make sure the profits are limited to the 10% threshold, and phase six should be a new comprehensive permit application and permit. So I did want to read that into the record. We can discuss it at the next meeting, but the petitioner is aware if they already weren't. Any other issues to add to this? Although I would encourage you, I know we talked about the three and four stories at the last meeting. I think that is a concern of a lot of folks in the development. And in addition to that, I have heard, not literally through the grapevine, but by the folks around town, that obviously they would love to have the developer reconsider that if at all possible. I know we don't necessarily have an ax or a hammer to stop it, but it would be, it would be appreciated to at least reconsider, so.
Mr. Chairman, as we mentioned at the last meeting, that yes, we, we will reconsider everything that was said by the board and would be more, more likely to be ready to address that at the next meeting.
Okay. Doesn't hurt to keep reminding you, right?
Doesn't hurt.
All right. That takes care of the hearing. Amy, do we need to continue this or is it automatically continued?
We have to continue it.
Yeah.
True.
It's been a long week. So I will entertain a motion to continue to August.
I think it's the 19th of August.
Oh, wow. Oh, I said.
The third, the third Thursday is the 15th.
Yeah, we'll do that when we need to reschedule. We can. All right. I'll entertain a motion to continue to August 15th.
I'll make that motion to continue to August 15th.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Meeting continued. Back to the agenda. And do we have any additional business to come before us tonight? Having no one raised their hand or indicated that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Did you have something you wanted to add before we?
No.
Jury's getting angry. Yeah, all right. All in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
I propose motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.